Good evening, everyone. The hour being after 6:45, I'd like to call the February 9th School Committee meeting to order, and the first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first order of business is a recognition about Project 351. Dr. Goff?
Right. I will not steal Principal Steve Morgan-Westhunder, so I'll let him introduce the 351 student and talk about what it is.
Sure.
And make sure the student is recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Goff. Good evening, committee. I'm happy to be here again to introduce this year's ambassador for the Project 351 program. You may recall from the past that this is an organization developed at the state level to drive scholarship and leadership around civic engagement. It was started by Governor Patrick several years ago and was inspired by Dr. Martin Luther King and the acts of service that were part of his life and his work. And every year, we identify one eighth-grade student from Walpole to be able to go and serve as the ambassador for our community, to go and learn about these concepts and learn about the actions of not only becoming a civic leader, but also be able to bring civic involvement back to their own home communities. And so we're very proud this evening to be able to recognize Suara Santratra. Come on up here, Suara. And she can certainly give you a little bit more information about what she's been up to and what she has planned in her ambassadorship.
So the first thing I want to say is I'm really happy to be here. I'm really grateful for this opportunity, and I want to thank Mr. Morgan-Westhunder and all my teachers for giving me this opportunity to represent my town as the ambassador this year. I love helping people, and I think this is a great opportunity for me to really make a difference in my hometown and hopefully inspire others too as well. So, yeah, thanks again, and thanks for inviting me here today.
Well, we're glad to have you. We're always glad to see people in person. Can you tell us a little bit about where you are in the process? Like, have you participated in the group day?
So, so far, I've attended several leadership academies, which is where they bring us through exercises and kind of help us, like, kind of teach us how to be, you know, better leaders. And I've attended the informational Zoom call for spring service, which is the next project I'm going to be working on. It's a partnership between Project 351 and Cradles to Crayons. And I have to, so I'll be organizing a clothing drive so people can donate clothing, and then we're going to donate it all to Cradles to Crayons. I think so far, Project 351 has affected the lives of over 600,000 unprivileged children in Massachusetts and given them clothing. So, yeah.
That's fantastic. So you're going to do something like community-wide, where you're gathering donations? I guess what I'm looking for is if there's something that we can do to help you, just let us know, okay?
Yeah.
Are there people that have questions? Comments? Yeah.
Yeah. So, in general, what is the mission of the organization? I know last year, it sounds like we talked about it a little, but just in case people are tuning in for the first time.
The mission is mostly to, you know, make a change in our community and, I guess, help unprivileged, like, people who need it, like, and also inspire others too as well. So, like, community service, fundraising, and things like that.
Great. And I second what Nancy says, to the extent we can help. You know, we have newsletters and such. If you're collecting donations, the more channels you use to disseminate that, the better. So just reach out to us, let us know. We'd be happy to send around any email or anything you have, information.
All right. Thank you.
That's what we know.
And thanks for being here tonight. Just being here is a good advertisement for kids who are interested and willing to take the time to make a community better. So, thank you very much for that.
Congratulations.
We did meet this morning and had preliminary conversations about some of her plans, and Suara had talked about possibly doing an extension of the clothing drive at the local library. Needs to meet those contacts first before going forward with that completely, but certainly that will be something that we could look to the committee to be able to help promote and do Dr. Goff's newsletters. Getting out to all the families and community would be, again, tremendous assistance in that.
Thanks very much. And again, we make you, you make us very proud, Suara, so thank you. Thanks for being here. Okay.
All right. We're to keep him going with the recognition of Dylan McCarthy, he's a grade eight student, right?
Correct, yes. So I'm happy to, this is like our eighth-grade night here, and I'm happy to see Favor there, who was one of our illustrious eighth-grader leaders when she was back at Johnson. But Dylan McCarthy, come on up here, Dylan, is a student at Johnson, an eighth-grade student at Johnson, who has shown the initiative to recognize an issue in the community, an issue that he has a strong connection to, and instead of just, you know, recognizing it, he has done something about it. And so I learned a little bit about what he's been doing, and I wanted to be able to share that with you and to provide him some recognition for his efforts. So I'm going to have you explain what you have done and what it was.
Hello. My name's Dylan McCarthy. I'm a mental health advocate. So, a couple of years ago, when I was around in seventh grade, I had deep struggles with depression and anxiety, and my number-one way to help cope was posting quotes on my Instagram. And I found that it was a really good skill and helped many people. Throughout my journey, I've used music also as a coping skill, and it's helped many people, and it just, it's great.
Wow. First of all, thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for putting yourself out there in a public way to not just help yourself, but to help others. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Fantastic. Ms. Nissia?
Yeah. Dylan, thank you for everything you're doing. I love how you got up and said, "I am an advocate." Like, there was so much power in that statement, and anyone can take on that mantle and decide there's something important to them and they're going to do something about it. I think it's so awesome how you're owning that.
Yeah.
And it made me think of a quote I remember from a TV show I used to watch where a character said, "Every time somebody steps forward and says who they are, the world becomes a better and more interesting place." And I think that especially pertains to people who are willing to stand up and share their mental health struggles, because a lot of people do struggle in silence and feel like they can't talk about it and own it the way that you are. And so, what a remarkable example you are setting for all of us and for all of the people who follow your Instagram page. It's absolutely fantastic.
Thousand followers to date, huh?
Yeah.
Lot of followers. Wow. So while we're at it, what is your Instagram? And are, do you have adults who follow? Or is that, my kids tell me to ask.
Well, hopefully they don't.
I don't want to be creepy.
So I have a public page, and I am a musician as well. I'm in a band, and I play music, but I post daily quotes, and I help people who struggle in silence. Yes, it is a public account, so anyone could follow. I've had many people tell me how much it's helped them throughout their journey. Many people that have struggled in silence have came up to me and told me that it's helped them a lot in many ways, and it's just a place where you can feel safe no matter what. So you can always reach out, you know, I'm always there, and it's a great place.
That's awesome. That's fantastic. There's something so powerful about it, coming from somebody at your age, because I think you're approachable maybe to your peers in the way an adult might not be.
Yeah.
That's awesome, too.
Thank you.
Make sure you say your handle into the microphone.
Okay. And my username is DylanPlaysMusic, all lowercase, if anyone needs that.
Perfect. All right. Other questions or comments? Again, thank you very, very much for being here.
Thank you.
You both make us very, very proud.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now for the trifecta, we have the Walpole High School Student Report. We have Favor here this evening to give us a report about Walpole High School, so the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Favor Nende, and I am a sophomore at the high school. Before I get into my report, I realized lately that we had a State of the Union address, so it made me think that this is kind of like a State of the School address. Anyway, students have had a success, successfully ended a second term as well as the first semester of this school year, and despite the cold weather that has challenged the start of the new term, students are pushing through and working hard as February vacation draws near. And there is a lot to look forward to. There is two trips that are coming up, one to Thailand and one to Spain. So they are making their final preparations as they will be shortly departing. The Thailand trip leaves next week, and this will be, the Thailand trip in particular is a great opportunity for students to experience a new culture, and they will be doing service projects such as helping endangered elephants by, like, making a sanctuary for them. And then the students who will be going to Spain will get a great chance to practice their Spanish skills, for those of them who take Spanish class, and they get to experience Spanish culture, which is a great thing. Winter sports are soon coming to an end, and many teams have had a great season. The girls' basketball team won another game last week, and the gymnastics team has also had success, as they have recently won another meet. The girls' track team overcame a challenging season, and the boys produced great results. And both the hockey teams worked hard, and the boys were able to finish with a winning record. Clubs continue to move smoothly as they have been all year. The speech and debate team has competed in one of two national qualifying tournaments last weekend and produced two candidates who will compete this year in June at Phoenix, Arizona. The Music Honors Society TRIM ended a Valentine's Day fundraiser where they sold flower grams, which were basically flowers with a song you would dedicate to someone. So we were able to raise a lot of money through that, and the proceeds are going towards VH1 Save the Music Foundation. The UNICEF club is in the middle of their More Than Words Drive, and they are planning a fundraiser for Easter this April. The Community Service Club hosted a fundraiser for the American Heart Foundations, where during lunchtime, they would sell ribbons. And finally, the Student Council hosted a hypnotist on Monday, and seniors were able, it was mostly a senior event, so seniors got hypnotized, and it was an enjoyable event for everyone who attended it. Overall, the school year is moving smoothly, and great things are on the horizon, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Favor.
Nice job, Favor. Very comprehensive. Are there questions or comments for her this evening?
I don't know about you, Favor, but do we know where they're going in Spain?
I think Barcelona.
Oh, nice.
Maybe I'll run into them.
I'm going to be in Barcelona.
Okay. You're welcome to stay. You're also welcome to leave if you need to.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next item is some new business, some out-of-state field trip requests. Dr. Goff?
We have a request, I believe, it's in your enclosure, for Opos Road Hot Hoppers to Kittery, Maine on March 11th, and then also to Keene, New Hampshire on May 6th of 2023. So present tonight is Erica Green to request the two out-of-state field trips for the Opos Road Hot Hoppers, and she'll answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend a vote to approve these trips.
Hello. How are you? I'm hoping that you guys will approve the two competitions in New Hampshire and in Maine. We have 18 jumpers going so far, and they're doing individual jumping, they do speed, they do freestyle, double dutch. It's fantastic. Yeah, so we've been doing it now. This is year number 13 or 14, I think. Yeah.
Thanks for being here, and thanks for continuing to offer it. It's amazing.
Thank you.
It's an amazing opportunity.
It is.
Questions or comments for Erica? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the April, the March 11th, 2023 field trip to Kittery, Maine, and the May 6th, 2023 field trip to Keene, New Hampshire for the Hot Hoppers. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thanks so much for doing it.
Thank you.
I know it's beyond what you need to, so thanks. And that gets us to the other field trip request. Dr. Goff?
Yes, we have an out-of-state field trip request for the Walpole High School Robotics Team to Rhode Island, North City, Rhode Island, right? March 10th through March 12th, and also to the robotics team to travel to Houston, Texas in April, April 18th through April 23rd. So present tonight is Brian Gaffey to request these two out-of-state field trips, and he'll answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend a vote to approve these two trips.
Hello.
Hey, Brian, welcome.
Hi. My name is Brian Gaffey. As mentioned, I'm the robotics coordinator for Walpole High School. So we've got two upcoming competitions, one that are out of state, one's down at Ponting Gansett High School in Rhode Island, March 10th to the 12th, and then another one, assuming we qualify throughout the season to go to Houston, Texas, for the championship event, which runs during the April school vacation week of the 18th to the 23rd of April. We've got 26 students on the team this year, and so these students are working to develop a robot that can pick up both traffic cones and, like, these bright cubes, and they have to try and place them and play a little bit of kind of like a head-to-head tic-tac-toe game. So you have to be able to work with depending on what side you're on, the cubes or the cones. And the robot's got like a four-foot-long arm to be able to go out and place these game pieces, and it's about five feet tall, so it is quite the contraption this year. It looks very intimidating there. So it should be a lot of fun, really exciting. The students have worked really hard on this last, on this robot, as they always have. They were really inspired based off how things went for them last year, where, you know, we just missed, just missed winning our two events, but they do take pride that we were the number-one ranked team in Massachusetts, and number 10 overall in New England. When we went to Houston last year, we came in 11th place in our division there. So they had a really strong, really strong past there, and they would, I'd be remiss to not say that they were also very inspired by their trip down there and brought back a whole Lego program that had gotten to, they're very rambunctious kids through the library to work with.
We met them.
But, yes. So, but they've been, they've been a lot of fun, and so hoping that, you know, if everything works out and we qualify as well, that, you know, it can be just as transformational of an experience for the kids again this year.
Well, same with you. Thank you so much for continuing to do this. It's an amazing amount of time, and we're lucky to have you here to request this. Are there questions or comments for Brian? Jen?
Do you get extra points if you beat your opponent at tic-tac-toe?
You do, yeah. So, yeah. The way it all works out is, so it's like you can get more sets of three in a row, you'll get bonus points, and then whoever has, like, the most points. So you get some points for scoring each piece, and then each group of three that you've gotten in a row gets you a multiplier. It's the simplest way of explaining it there. And then at the end of the game, there's like these bridges that the robots have to go on, so they'll have to try and see if you can get, like, all three robots to balance on a teeter totter. So it'll be, it'll, it should have some, it should be pretty exciting to see how it all plays out there.
Carrie?
I was just noticing the pretty low cost to the student for this trip, and just wondering, I'm assuming that that means somebody somewhere is subsidizing this to help our students have the opportunity to go?
Yeah. So we typically don't try and go back-to-back years just because of the cost of the trip, and so when we told the students that in order to make it more affordable, they would have to do some extra fundraising, they reached out to just about, like, every company in town and surrounding areas, and we received a lot more donations than we were kind of expecting, especially given the, given the economy for this year. So we've been able to price that down, and some of that cost is also based off of, we've made some connections with a hotel and United Airlines when we flew down last minute last year, and so we're hoping that they will continue to offer us the rate that they gave us last year, so.
Well, I don't know if there's a way to recognize who those donors are, those businesses and companies, but I think, you know, please express our thanks and gratitude to them for helping give our students a good experience.
Yeah.
That might have otherwise been out of reach for some of them, so that's great.
Absolutely, yeah. So what we'll do is, we put all of our sponsors on our t-shirts, and the larger sponsors will have their names on the robot as well.
Cool.
Then we have the students send out a thank you card, and we'll send, we can go if they're local, we'll bring the robot, and we'll demonstrate with them there.
Cool.
And so we can also get that passed along to everyone here as we have, like, a thank you celebration at the end of the season.
Thanks, Brian.
Nice job. Questions anymore? If not, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the March 10th, 2023 field trip to North City, Rhode Island, and the April 18th, 2023 through April 23rd, 2023 field trip to Houston, Texas for the Walpole High School Robotics Team. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And again, thanks so much for doing this. It's a, it's hard to explain for people who haven't seen it, but you guys do a good job of making it available to people over YouTube or whatever, so it's something to watch. Thanks for your continued work on it.
Absolutely. Thank you. And yeah, I'll make sure to send out, as we get the livestream links, to make sure to send them out to you all so they can be sent out to the community at large.
Perfect. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. Then that gets us to the next item, which is update from the History Department. Dr. Goff?
Tonight, we have Michael Donahue, who's the History Department Chair, to give an overview of the history curriculum update. But first, is Jody Awark, which I think you've met her already. This year, the School Committee meeting is the Middle School Humanities Coordinator, so she's going to provide you with the humanities.
Good evening. Thank you for having me again. I don't know.
Yeah, well, it's not working.
Oh, okay.
So it's working there.
You can do it from that one, yeah. Can I turn that?
Sure.
You just tell me when to. Sure. Or if I can look this, I don't like to have my back to you, but if I can look this, I can.
That's totally fine.
Just turn your microphone. Just turn your microphone for the vast listening audience.
All right. Here we go. Well, good evening. Thank you for having me here again. So tonight, I'm here to present the other hat that I wear, the district's the Humanities Coordinator, and that is to help support the Social Studies Department, six through eight, at Johnson and Byrd. And I have to say that this aspect of my job is something that drew me to this position. It's a challenge for me to learn the curriculum, but it is well-welcome, and as I learned, started to learn in my old district, the hefty tasks that we have our social studies teachers do in terms of also being teachers of content, but also teachers of literacy, I really wanted to delve more into that. So some goals that we have established in the middle school that I am helping to support the social studies teachers are the following: to support them as teachers of reading, writing, listening, and speaking, and for many of them, that might not have been what they went to school and majored in, and although they do a wonderful job in it, they are seeking guidance and leadership and support in those areas. Also, to align common vocabulary and writing expectations between the two departments, to identify opportunities that we can start to create some interdisciplinary, so some true humanities lessons, since we know that humanities is the study of the human condition through history and literature and philosophy, and to share professional resources, again, about content and pedagogy, to help them as instructors of the literacy skills. If we break down the literacy skills, one of the domains is reading, and of course, that is essential to unpack the content that the teachers of social studies are giving to their students, and our teachers do a great job with annotating skills, guiding questions, leveled passages, vocabulary, and outlining. Again, being able to teach these active strategies to decipher the nonfiction text that is usually at the core of their curriculum, and being able to look at the different text features, such as captions, and graphs, and indexes, and glossaries, and headings, and so forth. In the writing domain, again, helping to support them with the writing process, the very types of writing that is done in the social studies classrooms, such as argument writing, summary writing, drafting formal emails, letters, writing multiple of different complexities and types of essays, making sure that we're aligned in both disciplines using the MLA format, and that we have consistent editing checklists, and we're working really hard with our writing rubrics in both disciplines and aligning the language as consistently as possible, and making sure they're aligned to the NCAS standards as well. In terms of speaking and listening, this, I think, is an area that they really shine in social studies, and I've visited many classrooms, as you can see here, using the concept of Socratic seminars and having students be able to show what they know in oral language and in debates, and be able to defend their positions and so forth, as we know so much of history is having them decipher between fact and opinion, and being able to form, create opinions as global citizens. Debates, I will point out here in picture A, this was a debate that was done at Johnson Middle School in eighth grade, and they were debating term limits, and it was done in the media center, and the losing teacher, which I think actually was Mr. Warren, his punishment was a pie in his face. That was one day outside at recess. Close viewing guides, you know, the impact of media in a positive way and digital, excuse me, digital literacy is so powerful, and there's so many great film clips and segments that students can work, watch, especially in social studies, so being sure that they are watching with intent and purpose, and helping the teachers to create some close viewing guides. And of course, the consistent use of partner work and group work. There's one group, they're working on a China, I believe, poster, or Japan, I can't see if I'm hearing this China, and another group, they were getting ready to do a task card activity there. So those are the domains of literacy that we are working on and have a helping support in the classroom. This is just a sneak peek of some of the sample topics that each grade of level explores, and as I get to know more of this content over the next couple of years, we can then make some connections to some interdisciplinary lessons, and we've already started to do that a little bit this year as well. One of the big components of grade eight, of course, is a civic project, and each year we do this, we're getting better at it, and as you know, the rollout happened at a pretty tricky time with the pandemic, so we are ever making changes in how this is delivered, but each year is getting a little bit better. So just to review, these are the different steps in the project, and here, just highlight some of the projects that have been done at, this is a compilation of both schools over the past couple of years. So students have focused on the topic of hunger, homelessness, vaping, gun safety, the impact of the Norwood Hospital closing, sidewalks on 1A near the new fields. One student was very passionate. So students have focused on the topic of hunger, homelessness, vaping, gun safety, the impact of the Norwood Hospital closing, sidewalks on 1A near the new fields. One student was very passionate about investigating the possibility of an undocumented relative to get a license. And then the pros and cons of the solar panels at the Aggie. So again, at the eighth grade level, these are really meant to be community-based activities that the students can research and then have a call to action as they carry out their project. Some efforts that we've already done jointly and some next steps I'd like to highlight here. We have created a humanities calendar to be able to identify not only the timing of our common and benchmark assessments in ELA and social studies, but to also see where we have crossover in the skills that we're being asked the students to develop and to show demonstration of. And seeing sort of who's doing what first, you know, is, is social studies term three, seventh grader expected to write an argument essay? When are the argument writing skills being delivered in ELA class? So we're trying to make the progression of skills more effective. Again, we're working, ever working, this is going to be a constant work in progress, which I love. On our writing rubrics, as I mentioned last time, with ELA as well, that our expectations in languages consist, are consistent between both disciplines, so the students are clear on what their criteria for success are. We are slowly but surely, again, as we get to know the different disciplines, as we solidify our scoping sequence in ELA, where we can make some natural interdisciplinary connections. This past January, we did our first one where Martin Luther King Day lesson. So both disciplines met together on a PD day and at each grade level mapped out a lesson to deliver to the students. So it was shared ownership, some of the lesson was delivered in ELA and then some of the lesson was delivered in social studies. I've been having a lot of meetings jointly, which is something new, but it's been very successful. Again, it's important for both disciplines to know what each other are doing. So we can support one another and again, increase our dialogue consistency. And again, looking for opportunities as I wear another hat of being a coach, where I can go in and help teachers perhaps and use, infuse some literacy skills or lessons or activity or pedagogy that they haven't maybe used previously and vice versa, where maybe in an ELA classroom, we can explore a social studies, in quotes, social studies type lesson. So just quick examples of a few things that have already happened. Right now, currently, our grade six students are reading the novel Inside Out and Back Again about a family in Vietnam. And they are forced to flee during, during the war. And so to have the students dive deeper into the setting of Vietnam, they are working on a five themes of geography poster. And those are skills that they learned in the fall in social studies in grade six. In grade seven, I'm working with a Johnson teacher to develop a short story lesson, a multi-day lesson using the, the short story, The Dog of Pompeii, which is about the eruption of Mount Vesuvius. And so we'll be delivering that during her study of Rome. And again, we have some Byrd teachers at the moment that are just about to begin, actually, a civil rights leader research topic paper. And they are divining the task of doing the research in social studies class and then the execution of the essay in ELA class. And it's great to see that partnership and that the consistent language between the departments. So that's what I have for middle school.
That's awesome.
Any questions?
You know what? I think we're going to hold just because some of it will overlap with what Mike's going to talk about. So we'll hold the questions for the both of you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you though, Jody.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Glad to be here. This will be the fifth year in a row that I've come to talk about the 2018 social studies frameworks. And this is the last time, I'll lead with that, because it's the last year of our phase in. So if we look at where we've been since 2018, when the frameworks came out in June, we had the social studies task force meet, I believe, five times during the 2018, 2019 school year to come up with a plan to implement the new standards. The six through eight courses were rolled out the following year. And then we followed that year's eighth grade class and implemented the new freshman curriculum. The next year, the new sophomore curriculum, and this year they are juniors. So we've made the shift to implement the new curriculum. And we are teaching US in the modern world, which is a look at both world and US history from the conclusion of World War I up through the present. It's been a challenging few years to make significant curriculum changes. But especially with the middle school and even moving through the high school, each grade level is getting more comfortable, expanding, refining, you know, moving away from maybe how that course was taught the initial year, especially with the freshman course, which was a few years ago when they were half at home, half at school. So now it's really sort of developing into what we want it to look like. And really emphasizing getting students to do history instead of doing history to students. Another change that has come along with the completion of the phase in at the high school is that the junior research paper has been a longstanding expectation. Every course, every academic level, students junior year write a research paper. And we had a lot of discussion last year about if this is really one of our key priorities, we're going to set a path from freshman year to that second semester junior year to really specifically lay out when we want students to develop specific skills. And we have identified quarterly assessments in all of our core courses where they're going to build on the research skills, they're going to build on the writing skills throughout their freshman year, throughout their sophomore year, and then through the first half of their junior year until they get into the research paper, the second half of the year. We're introducing them to rubric language, to assessment language, to research language that they're going to see 10 times before they get to the research paper when they are a junior in the hopes of making them incredibly familiar with what the research and writing expectations are in social studies. The civic engagement project at the high school. I'm not here to make a point about start times. It was just some of the best data that students collected last year was on school start times. So those two charts on the left are from one group's presentation on school start times. And you can see they asked a group of parents, and I believe the number they got was they got 68 responses. Does their child struggle to wake up in the morning? And then they asked a group of students and they got 270 some odd responses about how many hours of sleep they get a night. This is just to sort of show you an example of how students are collecting data, how they're using it to help make their argument in their final presentation in the last stage of the civics project. We are working to refine what the civics project looks like, refining our communication, refining our connections within the community. And as this group of students move into their sophomore year and the civic engagement project, they will have had sort of a full introduction to it when they were in eighth grade. So they're probably going to be a lot more familiar with what we're asking them to do and what is possible for them, having, having gone through it once. We're really hoping to develop meaning, both with what our students are doing and with how our relationships throughout Wapo, throughout everyone that we are contacting, sort of to keep, keep in contact with the people that we've worked with and help students really develop projects that are meaningful to them and also to our community. The last two pieces I have to share are a little bit about AP scores. These are our scores from last May. As you can see, we've had continued success in our AP program with European history, with US history and psychology. The overwhelming majority of our students, over 90% of them are getting threes, fours and fives. And even, you know, we're looking at over 70% of our students are getting fours and fives. So I did want to come share, you know, some of that good news. I do remember last time I was here, you gave me the charge to try to increase our AP numbers and try and get more students involved. So this year, unfortunately, we didn't have the student registration in order to, we didn't have enough students registered to run AP European history. So we're still running AP Psychology and AP US History. But we're looking for ways to get that program back. And I'm confident it will be back next year. But we're also looking at ways to sort of expand what we offer to get more students in. And that's why the last thing I have to share tonight is our plan to introduce AP United States Government and Politics. We've got sort of a three-step plan. I was about to tell you that we hadn't had a teacher sign up yet, but apparently the signups came out earlier this week. So we have a teacher signing up to take the summer institute, which AP teachers have to do before they are able to teach the course. A teacher's going to take that this summer, plan to outline the course and sort of work with me next school year, look at possible resource and things of that nature. And then probably ask for some summer R and D time the following summer, the summer of 2024. And we can add it beginning in the 2024, 2025 school year. So that's our plan there.
Exciting stuff. Are there questions or comments for Mike or Jody? Bill?
Madam Chair, I saved all my questions up for this part of the favorite subject area, as we all know. I think it's one, just a couple of scattered thoughts. Someone, I, I think there's a tremendous value in that research paper. And I think, as, as Jody said, in, in the beginning part where you talked about the overlap with ELA in this as well, the, this, the ability for history and civics to help students continue to practice those skills. And I think that the historically specific skills of research and source critiques and things like that can really go a long way. And I know when, when I went to college and I came out of the system learning how to do a good research paper, I think not just in the field of history, but in so many other fields. And to be able to gather those sources is a really wise investment of educational time. So I'm, I'm glad to see you're continuing with that. So I think that is wonderful. I, I love, as we have said and we gave you the charge last year, I love your creative and inventive ways to look at expanding the offerings of AP. And we just, we want to give students more choice, especially at that higher level to, to push themselves as well. So we know you definitely got that. We're also, I think all of us, big fans of the civics project. Some of us maybe less than others because we got more questions at our day job about some of your projects. But the, I think we've talked about for a long time, it just bears repeating here. A number of us have had, Carrie and I got to talk to the third grade at Boyden about Wapo History and Government. And I always, Clifford and Mr. Ross have me over at Byrd as well. I think a few of us would be very interested in continuing to work with you to create a more formalized space. Although I think the email dialogue we have is important because that's basically how now in the modern world their civics engagement will be carried out. But I think we, we've said in the past, we'd love to perhaps find a time before one of these meetings and post a subcommittee or post it just to, to speak with students and hear their petitions and thoughts as well. I think that has a lot of strong merit as well. So all good stuff. I like what you're doing. It's, it's good.
Thank you. I, I think the, the email communication was the, the only way to do things when we started. And I think we're hoping to sort of grow beyond that, to still have that as something that we can do. But to get more people into schools, to get more kids out of the school, doing things to connect with their community.
Other questions? Comments? Dr. Graff?
I remember like 2018, right, on that task force. And it's really amazing, you know, how far you've come in, in, in that, you know, short amount of time when we had those frameworks released and looking at how are we going to tackle this? And I remember you did such a great job at organizing and facilitating the process. And I think it was getting the, the middle schools through and then looking at the high school and how to make those decisions and, and what we need to do in order to, you know, fulfill this, but do it in, in a way that it's a testament to our students in terms of teaching and learning. And that was, that was really well done. So thank you. And I, I love the English and, and history and looking at that interdisciplinary and, and making sure that, you know, we're on the same page and having that consistency that students and. Staying to build that, that's what happened, you know, when I came into, to teaching, there was a really strong emphasis on that interdisciplinary. And I think the pendulum has swung one way, now we're, we're coming back. So good to see.
Thank you.
Anything else? I would just add, I think that, that Bill Buckley is on to something in terms of people wanting to reach out to the school committee. We want to be available to, to the students, both the eighth grade and the high school students. So, you know, if we can sort of formalize something, we're, we're available and we'll be glad to, to participate. I don't know whether it's, it makes sense, whether it's once or a few times as their projects develop. But, you know, we, I think that a number of us feel that way. So that would be, that would be great. And Mike, can you just talk a little bit about the fact that the current events is part of social studies also? And how some topics are just hot button topics? And you, I know from having kids go through the, the system that your department does a good job about teaching kids to think for themselves. That, you know, as, as there might be differing opinions, that, that it's important for, for the history department or the social studies department to encourage both listening and opining in situations like that. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. I was actually thinking, there's a teacher in our department who has a poster in her room that says, beware of the fake news invasion. And what I think our, our department does really well is it, is it brings the news to students and doesn't just ask them, you know, what they think is happening. We ask them questions, you know, what do you think this author's point is in writing this? What do you think they're trying to get at? Sort of having them be able to read something in the news and be able to identify if this is something that's purely informational or if this is something that's probably going to be labeled commentary or opinion. So, you know, as we've both talked about, sort of the development of skills, that's a really important skill we want our kids to develop. We want them to develop critical thinking. We want them to be able to articulate not just what they believe, but why someone who disagrees with them would disagree with them. And sort of pushing them to go that one or two or three steps beyond just saying what they believe and why they believe it is really going to serve them well and wherever life takes them after Wapo High School.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Bill?
Nancy, just one thing. As the snuff man would say, point of personal privilege, I would be remiss, before I let you leave, to not remind you that the town turns 300 next year. And so obviously I, I think that sort of, there's going to be a lot of opportunities within the community for history and storytelling and for your students to be part of both commemorations and learning, hopefully within the classroom and without. So I think there's more dialogue to happen around that. I know Mr. Ricker, one of your great alumni, educators piled a whole bunch of us in a bus, I think probably around sixth or seventh grade, and just drove us around town and explained what everything was and what it was in the past. So things like that, I, we hope, working with the historical society and perhaps partnering together with the school department to create more spaces like that in the next 18 months. So we'll, we'll get you on the hook for that too, so.
Last year, the historical society reached out to me and they gave me a copy of every, one copy of every town report dating back over 100 years. And I just took them, because yeah, we'll take them. And the taking them actually led to conversations with teachers in the department and the creation of a new club that started at the end of last year. They're called the Antiquarian Society.
Love that.
And what they're doing is the, the students, it's in the very early stages, but they're trying to identify things around town, things that are interesting to them. They've gotten some of the, the Mac computers, not quite the ones that Mike Allen has in the film program, but I think ones that still do quite a bit. And they're in the very early stages of creating some things. It'd be wonderful if some things were ready for the 300th anniversary. But I, I don't, I don't want to say where these kids will be at, at any given point in time. But that is, that has started.
Good stuff.
Sounds cool.
That's awesome. Well, thank you for being here this evening, and thanks for all the good work that you're doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks, take care.
Okay, that gets us to the superintendent's report.
Just a few things. A great turnout last week for the Title I night. We had children's, Dr. Hahn had children's book author, Paul Reynolds, this is actually his book, and called Going Places, and he was on hand, he presented to the students and their families. The presentation was titled The Joy of Reading, but he also talked about his experiences, you know, growing up and writing, you know, his interest in writing books. So every student in attendance received literacy and math resources, and then also a signed copy of his book, and I think the schools received a copy, too.
Every elementary.
Every elementary school, as well as your children.
My children got a copy. They were there, so they got one.
As you know, the last several months, maybe more, I'll pass these down, you can take a look at them, just some screenshots. We've been developing the curriculum website, and now that is, it's live, and it can be found on our district's website. It went live last Friday, right? Last Friday. So those are just a couple of screenshots. So we really look at it, it's intended to provide a general overview for our K-12 curriculum. We look at it as a program of studies for all grades and content, and Dr. Hahn is still working with department chairs to make sure if there's any changes, so it really is a living document, but it is there, it's there for families for all grades, which is great. Term one elementary report cards will be shared with families tomorrow, and the report cards will be available through the family portal, Aspen X2, and there'll be directions on how to access the report card. And the term one report card does communicate student progress towards meeting the end of the year learning standards, and there's a slight but important change to the descriptors of the academic performance levels, is the phrase "at this time." So the purpose of adding this phrase is to share with families where their students are academically at this time of the year. Teachers will assess, and they assess student performance against these learning standards, which are specific and observable grade level skills. Our report cards reflect the learning standards as outlined by the current Massachusetts state frameworks, and teachers assess by measuring individual student performance against the identified concrete learning standards. And then I just gave you a screenshot, because that's some information, and then when Mary posts the school committee minutes, the people can click to access the website, which will take them to the standard-based report. There is now a standard-based report card website, webpage for that, so that's great. Had a really good time going down to the TV studio this week. A student, as part of the course, interviewed me on none other than snow days. I don't know if he was like hopeful that after interviewing me, we might get some snow days, so Nick, I don't know, it's looking, next week, we're looking pretty good for good weather. So it was a great time, and I really thank him, you know, for allowing me that opportunity and getting to know more about the TV studio and then also his, you know, high school and college plans for next year. In terms of kindergarten registration update, just to update you on numbers, we're currently at 234 pre-reg. There's about 43 or 45 on the census that haven't registered. Those usually come in. Where are we compared to last, to this year? We're at about 290K students this year, so we're pretty much on target for those, you know, surprises, but we'll see. And the school secretaries are actually trying to find these families that haven't pre-registered to see if they've registered or if they moved, because sometimes they do move, you know, out of town. So that's great. And just a reminder, February vacation week is the 20th through the 24th. That's it for me.
Great, thank you. That gets us to old business on the middle school project report.
So they're still working on foundations. Anybody that's been up there, you know, day in, day out, notice a little bit more concrete each day, I think, and we will be, in the next couple of weeks, considering adding, I guess, some budget elements to the school. It came in under budget, so instead of value engineering some things out, we're going to be trying to add a couple of things back in.
More than a couple, Mark, more than a couple.
More than a couple, a couple, bigger speech, I guess. So that's about where we are.
Great, thank you. And moving along, the high school project. Mr. Ahern is not here this evening.
Just to make one update about our, you were probably going to say the same thing, it's about our high school kiddos at the legislative breakfast this morning. I thought they did such a nice job in their statement that, you know, they're, you know, the younger, their siblings are going to be able to take part in this brand-new middle school, and then they come to the high school and, you know, what can be done about it? And we came, we were able to have a great discussion about the renovation project and what we're trying to do and the stage that we're in, and allowed them to answer, us to answer some of their questions, and it was really nice, even after the meeting, some of the conversation that was going on and some really thoughtful questions about funding and budget and priorities. So I think it would be important if we can continue that conversation with those students and get their feedback.
Yeah, it was wonderful to have them there, and it was wonderful that they felt comfortable to ask, but I was super impressed that they were thinking about the next generation of students. They weren't really thinking about themselves, which I thought was pretty, pretty nice. So moving on then, subcommittee activities, are there any subcommittees that want to report?
We have, we had a policy subcommittee meeting there, looking at some policies from MASC that we need to look at, and we discussed them, and in terms of, there were a few of them that were budget-related. I don't know if you have anything to add to, and we're going to get those to, Mike looked them over, we're going to get those to legal and see what.
Yeah, just have to stay current.
Stay current. And then we have the legislative breakfast this morning.
The legislative breakfast this morning was very, very well-attended again, so that was a good thing, and we're at the beginning of the state budget process, so it was a good time to be in touch with our legislators, and we're really grateful for all of them showing up with their representatives. That gets us to citizens' comments. There are no citizens here to comment, so that gets us to approval of warrants and payroll. Carrie?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the following payroll warrant, number 2329PA, for the amount listed in your packet.
Second.
We have a motion by Carrie, a second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 500. And if you're listening to us, Sean, Carrie's doing a great job.
It all comes back so easily. I'll also make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants, number 223030, and number 223031, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
Again, we have a motion by Carrie, a second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 500.
And now I will make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations.
Perfect, thank you.
To Johnson Middle School, Old Post Road School, and Boyden School from Bay State Textiles Recycling, in the amount of $284. Systemwide, from Bobby's Auto Service, a commission in the amount of $1,400. To Boyden Elementary School, Box Tops for Education Commission, in the amount of $81. To Boyden Elementary School, Shutterfly Commission, in the amount of $1,577. And to Wapo High School, from Mr. Kevin Haley, skis, boots, helmet, goggles, bag, and poles, approximately valued at $1,000.
We have a motion by Carrie, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 500. And thank you to everybody for those generous donations. And does somebody want to take the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the January 24, 2023 Special Education Subcommittee Minutes, and the January 26, 2023 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Bill, a second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 500. And it's all you, Mr. Breen.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 500. Thanks, everybody, and we'll see you.